Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the November 5th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask our clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Alderman Barzak.
Here.
Shkleski.
Here.
Oetnayer.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Bytally.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Ten present, none excused.
We have a quorum. We ask that you rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Barzak.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to item D on our agendas. We have four items up for public hearing this evening, and I will ask our clerk to read Public Hearing Number One.
A hearing on a resolution relative to determination special use permit for QuickTrip to establish a fuel station and convenience store on currently undeveloped land formerly AMF Bowling, located in the 10900 block of West Lapham Street.
Thank you. Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the quarter of Lapham and Highway 100, our main street is the old bowling alley, side of the vision here. The western, eastern half has been subdivided off into its coast car wash.
I'm sorry, Mr. Steeble, is your microphone on? It's on here. You might need to hold it closer.
Testing.
There you go, that's better.
Does that work better?
From the top.
Last May, the Common Council approved the subdivision of this former AFC bowling lot and the approval of the coast car wash to be located on that site. This evening is proposal to develop the remainder of the five and a half acre site with the 3,700 or 7,300 square foot, three and a half acre QuickTrip. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is because a fuel station is a special use in a C3 zoning, it requires a public hearing, and that's why we're having a public hearing this evening. We have also been advised by QuickTrip representatives that sometime in the near, very near future, they want to apply for a Class A liquor license. Now, the Common Council created the special use for a Class A liquor license less than a year ago for the purpose of reviewing each site to ensure that they had adequate site and landscaping and architectural features on the site. We are doing that now for the fuel station. In the interest of being business friendly, we are including this alcohol special use portion at the same time to save them money and time. Now, if the Common Council does not want to approve the special use, they certainly, they should have that right to do that, but even if they were to approve it, they would still not have a liquor license until they apply, make application to the License and Health Committee. It goes through the committee and the Common Council for approval. This just removes one step that would no longer be necessary. Having the special use for liquor license is a great idea because it helps us improve every site that has, that has been granted the privilege of having a liquor license, and that's why we're adding that to this public hearing this evening. The QuickTrip, as everyone that has been to one knows that they're a good sized operation 24/7. They'll have two to eight people per shift, and they carry the typical convenience store items. And if they get a liquor license, it would also include alcoholic beverages. It was brought to our attention that a QuickTrip bought a store, I think around on Cleveland and Highway, and Greenfield Avenue, and turned it into a tobacco outlet plus store. This will not be that, and as part of this special use, we could ensure that it doesn't unless it comes back and specifically asks for approval. That is, if, if the approval for the liquor license is approved, there would be a separate 400 square foot area located on this site, and it'd be on that area, and all liquors would have to be located in that area and no other location. And then, if they wanted to sell hard liquor, it would be behind the countertop as well as tobacco sales at six feet and 50 feet respectively. They could not exceed any of those square footage unless they come back to the Common Council for approval. The architectural of the building is going to be completely a brick building with a double course of soldier brick along underneath the windows and around the entire facility, a gabled roof, a green metal standing seat roof, and extra windows. Some of these windows will be not opaque, but spadral in nature in that they'll be stacking products behind them. But we've added a lot more windows to the facility to try to make this building a four-sided architecture. There'll be 22 gas pumps, 22, or 22 pumps, 20 gasoline pumps on the north side of the building, and two diesel pumps on the west side of the building. We are creating two more entrances as a result of this, will be closing one existing one. And this entrance already approved for the car wash will also be available. Also on this site, they'll be creating a stormwater retention pond as required by the city's regulations at MMSD. And we're also going to be working with the engineering department at the Alderman of the district to try to get some traffic calming device to discourage traffic coming from the gas station to exiting out onto Highway 100, and we're still working that out. 25 parking spaces will be required from this development, 36 are being provided. As part of the approval process, we require the order to conduct a traffic study, which they have completed, for impact analysis, carried analysis, and intersection improvements to make sure that it has appropriately managed traffic volumes. 22 hundred new trips per day, 2,300. It'll be about 1,700, 1,800 are going to be developed from the gas station, that's one way in, and about 450 from the car wash, that's one way, and double to go in and out. The Plaid Commission has reviewed this project, has recommended approval, and we've received no objections to date, and the applicant will be responsible for complying with the DOT recommendations such as traffic widening for stacking, to get more stacking here for left turn and a left turn lane in here, and modifying the traffic intersection lights, and also a message board that would have to be up, all at the owner's expense. If you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions or comments from the Common Council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
John, I just have a couple of questions. That green space to the west, that's, that's, they own that property, but there's going to be a stormwater retention, and that's, that's never going to be developed beyond just like a little green space like park thing, or?
It could only be developed if they came back for a specific approval. Otherwise, it's going to continue to be green grass.
Okay. And then, my other question, because I find myself at QuickTrips around Wisconsin all the time on bicycle rides, bike racks in the plan? I saw bollards, I believe. I wonder if Steve shares that.
I would be surprised if we did not have bike racks, too.
Okay. Those, that was just my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Barzak.
I don't know if there's any representatives from the QuickTrip here tonight, but I just want to, I want to make sure publicly that they're aware that on Highway 100, there's a little bit of an issue that goes on occasionally called cruising. And we have a Speedway over on Highway 100 and Theater Truck or Drive, and it gets pretty intense on beautiful summer nights with cars wanting to show off their nice stereos, and they want to show off their newly waxed car, and they want to show their little lights that are shining from the bottom of the cars, and the only way to do that is they pull in and then they congregate. And I know that at the Speedway station, we have a requirement that a minimum of two employees are on at all times. Is that the same thing that's going to happen at the QuickTrip? Is there a provision in the special use that there'd be a minimum of at least two people on at all times to make sure that there's safety for each employee?
We'll let the owner, the company's representatives respond to that.
Sure. My name's Troy Molezova, Real Estate Development Manager with QuickTrip, 1626 Oak Street, La Crosse, Wisconsin. Alderman, to answer your question, our company policy is we would always have a minimum of two, of two folks on staff at all times. So our company policy is we'd never have less than two.
That's perfect. And, and again, I just want you to be aware that sometimes the commotion, sometimes the busyness late at night can get pretty intense, and I don't know what your policy is on loitering, because at, at the speedways, they haven't embraced the non-loitering and have given our officers permission to make sure they're ticketed if anybody's hanging around. I'm hoping maybe you do the same of some sort, or if you have a policy to that effect?
Yeah, absolutely. Obviously, our reputation with communities throughout Wisconsin, working with law enforcement, we want our stores to be welcoming for every aspect of the community, and to that end, we'd be happy to work with the police department if there's any issues that arise. We're very proactive in that regard, that we want our facilities to be welcoming and available for everybody.
That's phenomenal. Thank you. I'm, I'm going to continue with John. John, you went into the, the, a little bit of that they're sort of applying right away, or at least you're, you're making it known that they're going to apply for a Class A liquor license for packaged good?
I'm under the impression that they applied on applying about two months before they actually opened. We're trying to encourage them to apply now.
My also understanding is we only have one license left, and so when we look, are we going to look at, you know, the different developments, that this is a 14 and a half million dollar development, and I know there's another one that's in for a special use tonight, and I think they're going to do maybe $50,000. We have an open pantry that got one by us, and it's a disaster, but that's a whole nother discussion. But with us being aware, I think it's, it's pretty obvious that, that we would have the option of, of what development would get the last Class A license, because you're making it aware to us tonight. Am I correct in assuming that?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to chime in, and I'm speaking out of turn here. I don't see this as being noticed, the alcohol issue, on the agenda, and I want to make sure we're very mindful of how far, how far the discussion goes with alcohol licensing. It's not on the agenda. Okay?
Thank you, City Attorney.
I think, was it the public hearing notice? Steve?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Common Council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Ranky.
I have a question, John, regarding, is there adequate room on this site basically to prevent the stacking of vehicles on Lapham Street itself, because we have the fire department right across the street, and I wouldn't want any, anything preventing the fire department from leaving. So is there adequate room on the site?
Yeah, we, we, from a professional standpoint, yes, there is. The traffic study did an in-depth analysis to make sure that driveway locations are so that we can accommodate engines being leaving. So we have tried to provide for that as much as possible, as much as practical.
Especially in the summertime. I'm really concerned when we have the vehicles that.
Yeah, I'm not saying it would never happen.
For the car wash.
Vehicles going to have to move, but generally, we should be in very good shape.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the members of the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on Public Hearing Number One? If you could give us your name and address, please.
My name is Mohammed Bimani. I own the store on 2203 South 108 Street. We've been owning that store for the last 10 years, and I just don't think any need for more gas station there, because there were tons of gas stations. So creating a new existing business, you guys putting out the old businesses, they are already existing over there, and allowing a liquor license to the QuickTrip, that could create a more problem in Highway 100, which is already existing enough. So I just don't think is a right way to do for city to allowing this new businesses to come, which is same kind of business, nothing new, to bring more people into the area. We already struggling because the Sam's Club slows down, and that took away a lot of business from us. We didn't do anything to keep them there, but now we're bringing this QuickTrip over there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the members of the audience?
Can I say something?
Yes.
My name is Ramzan Charania, and I own BP on Highway 100, Oklahoma, Paul Richard. About 10 years ago when I bought it, my understanding was on Highway 100, there's some kind of restriction that there's, there'll be no more gas stations allowed because of the Highway 100, you've got a lot of, and we paid premium price for that. Now by allowing QuickTrip over there is, small business people like us will get crushed or maybe we'll shut down. So, that's, I want to request to think about that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the audience on Public Hearing Number One? Okay. Seeing none, we will close our first public hearing. We will move on to item two on our agendas. I'll ask our clerk to read Public Hearing Number Two.
Hearing on resolution relative to determination of a special use permit for a proposed butcher shop to be located within the existing mixed-use building at 2079 South 69th Street.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right across the street from the well-known West House Cheese and Sausage Shop is currently a vacant building in the ground floor and two apartments above that will continue to be in operation. Because the area is zone C2, and they're going to be put into commercial operation below, that's what triggers the special use, and that's the purpose of the public here tonight, because it's going to be a butcher shop located in that facility. They'll also, not only meats, but they'll also be doing spices and breads. Hours of operation during the, close on Monday, but during the week are 10 to 6, and on the weekends, lesser hours. This is a red ring of what the building is going to look like. We'll talk about the exterior improvements. They're replacing the sheaves, sheaves and the asphalt siding with shake siding, horizontal sub, board siding, and then veneer brick, so it's going to be very quite attractive. Also adding two new windows on the north side and on the east side of the building. Metal awnings and a new projecting side. This is the north side of the building, the north, west, west side of the building. They'll actually, this will be cut out for about a 10-foot wide area for tenants' utilization. Probably in the future, they might put a door in, but that's effectively at this time. And additional landscaping and refuge will be in the garage. The owner has, is in the process of applying to receive a $25,000 commercial facade grant, and the awnings and the projecting side will need to grant a privilege for the Board of Public Works, which they will, both those issues will be taken up at a later date. The Plaid Commission has approved this recommendation, and if there's any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any comments or questions from the Common Council on Public Hearing Number Two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I just wanted to make a comment that as the Alderman for the district here, I'm very happy to see this development here. It's, that building's been vacant for a couple of years. The previous tenant that was in there was problematic with following both state and local laws, if many of you recall. The new owner here, I mean, Mark Lutz has been a virile asset to the community, looking forward to what he's done there. I'm sure it'll be on the same par as what he's done with his other properties, and we wish him the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Common Council? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the members of the audience on Public Hearing Number Two? Seeing none, we will close Public Hearing Number Two, and I will ask our clerk to read Public Hearing Number Three.
Hearing on a resolution relative to determination, a special use permit for a proposed daycare with an existing church property, City of Faith Church, located at 6420 West Mitchell Street.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This building has been used many times in a very different aspects as a church or an educa, and educational facility, and it's going to be the educational facility that we'll be talking about in just a moment here. The goal is to put a daycare center into this building, and because it is a daycare center, that requires a special use, and that's the purpose of this public hearing, is determine if we adequately address the needs of a, of a daycare center. The hours of operation are going to be Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday, limited hours, and then closed on Sunday. There'll be 2,400 square foot of this, of the western side of the building, three former classrooms. They'll be about 50 children there, ages three to 12. The owner and operator of this facility has three other successful operations in the Milwaukee metropolitan area. 65 parking stalls are provided on the site. They'll be sharing, they'll be sharing the daycare center with the church operations. And one nice, particularly nice feature about this facility is that it's got access to the building from the parking lot and drop off from kids, and picket from kids, from the parking lot, from 65th Street, and from Mitchell Street. They'll be using, those three former classrooms will be converted to a daycare center. The Plaid Commission has reviewed this project, has recommended approval, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions from the Common Council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Ranky.
John, has this business any other locations in the City of West Dallas, or just in Milwaukee?
Just Milwaukee.
Just Milwaukee. And what part of Milwaukee, could I ask?
That I don't know. We could, we could have the owner answer some questions in just a minute about that.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have three other locations. One is located at 7330 West Lincoln Avenue in West Dallas. The other is located at 1627 South 44th Street in West Milwaukee, and the third location is located at 809 West Burnham Street in Milwaukee.
I see. Did you say 73rd and Lincoln?
Yep. The old post office building.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Can we have your name and address, please, just for our record before you?
My name is TNG Coaks. My home address?
Whatever.
5,400 State Road 83 in Heartland, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
And how many children are you anticipating serving?
Probably 12 to 15 children in each classroom.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Common Council? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the members of the audience on Public Hearing Number Three? Seeing none, we will close Public Hearing Number Three, and I will ask our clerk to read Public Hearing Number Four.
Hearing on the 2019 City of West Dallas Mayor's Recommended Budget.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Grill. I'm the city administrator for the City of West Dallas. I'm here with Peggy Stino, who's our finance director. We're pleased to present the 2019 budget and action plan on behalf of Mayor Dan Devine. Just want to go through a little history and some context of how our departments prepare the budget. We have citywide mission and vision statements. They're listed here. The bottom line is, for our vision, is we're working to make the community the preferred municipality in the area. In 2017, the council adopted a strategic plan, and there's five goals that are listed here. So the budget plan also includes accomplishing these goals. Some of the accomplishments we've done so far this year are listed here. We've launched our marketing and branding campaign, that's why West Dallas. We've also worked with creation, creating new neighborhood association, doing facade grants, the 20th anniversary of the schoolhouse in the Lock Cabin Schoolhouse at our Historical Society, expansion of mobile integrated health program, violence-free West Dallas, working with the public to create a dog park, reinvigorating our home security program, conducting training workshops for entrepreneurs, expansion of the information that we have online for citizens and businesses, passing the dark store referendum with 91% of the voters in support. We also conducted our first homeowner resource fair this year. We received the Silver Wisconsin Health Community designation. The fire department received the highest rate, ISO rating this year. We also purchased ladder 61 and engine 61. We welcomed our new K-9 officer, Gizmo. We implemented a pay-for-performance program for employees and also technology training for employees. We're continuing to work on the development of our capital improvement program and identifying facility needs, and the police department implemented a cart program. We have also provided technology equipment to our workers in the field, and we've begun to implement an asset works program for our public works department. The engineering department started online bidding for projects, and then the library also had pop-up programs and expansion of their current library program. This is not an expansive list of everything we've done, but this are just some highlights over this year. Additionally, we are guided by core values and competencies. They're listed here. I'm not going to read through them for you, but they're here for context. In 2019, the budget priorities remain similar to past years, but we continue to provide high-quality services for the citizens, focus on public safety, property maintenance, and blight remediation, work on development and making the City of West Dallas a destination, and focus on fiscal sustainability and operational excellence. Under the category of public safety and property maintenance and blight remediation, there's several items listed here that are included to the budget. One, the first one is under public safety, including an additional $1 million for allocation for overtime for the police department and the fire department, adding $440,000 in new allocations, focus on allocation for, of $50,000 for the building inspection program, looking at creating a pilot registration program and exploring possible rental inspection programs, and also expanding our citizen engagement through further neighborhood association. In the category of development and destination, we're looking to create new events next year to have new people come to the City of West Dallas, continue on our redevelopment with Cobalt, Mandell, and Ogden. We'll be in the second year of our branding campaign. We're working on other public art initiatives. The West Dallas Farmers Market will be celebrating its 100th anniversary, and then we'll be also focused on the opening of the West Dallas Dog Park. In fiscal sustainability and operational excellence, we're working at reallocating In fiscal sustainability and operational excellence, we're working at reallocating certain positions to meet the current needs of the city. One of those is the grant writer or fiscal analyst. Another one is adding a full-time appraiser in the assessor's office. Reallocation of a mechanic from the public works department to the fire department. Continue working with other governmental agencies to do more collaboration. As I mentioned previously, implementing the AssetWorks program. We also have NeoGov that helps us with our performance management and for employees and also onboarding and hiring initiatives. Strategic investment in the maintenance and repair of the facilities. Expand accountability through performance management. Focus on our business development and interaction with citizens. Implement a total benefit package to recruit and retain a high-quality workforce and engage employees in wellness and benefits with strategic planning to limit the increases to our health and, health insurance program. A little bit about the demographics currently of West Dallas. We have almost 60,000 people. The median income is a little over $46,000. The age is 38.2. The poverty level in West Dallas is 14.5%. We have 27,000 occupied housing units. 52% of those are owner-occupied and forty, almost 48% are renter-occupied. We do have 1,926 vacant housing units. I'll turn it over to Peggy for a little financial information.
So as you can see on the screen, our equalized value has begun to turn around and increase over this past year, something that it hasn't done since 2015. However, our assessed value has not, to this point, followed suit. This is, this is a matter of equalized value is the statewide comparative value. Assessed value is the parsing of properties within the city and how the taxes are allocated. We do have an estimated tax rate this year, going into 2019 of $11.53. Again, a portion of that is due to the value going down, not necessarily the budget increasing. We don't have an overall tax rate yet for the city as we are still waiting for levies from other taxing jurisdictions in the city. However, our budget revenues and expenditures will be balanced for 2019 at approximately $61 million. Some of the impacts on the local budget from the state perspective. We have shared revenue that we get from the state, very large revenue coming in. Nothing new for 2019 there. We have a couple restraint programs, levy limits and expenditure restraint. No major changes on those. However, the state has been adjusting the personal property program. In 2018, we are seeing a certain class of personal property deleted from the rolls and the state is paying an aid payment in 2019 and beyond. We just have to see what the state legislature does on that. In regard to transportation aids, there was a reduction in 2000, for the 2019 aids of approximately 124,000. Another revenue we get from the state, approximately $200,000, is a payment for municipal services that is for state properties in the city that the city has to provide, public services, protective services, snow plowing, et cetera, too. We do receive a state aid for computers, tax exempt computers that used to be part of the tax program. No changes on the recycling program. And then we do have an option of a clean water fund for some loans.
Just go over a few of our continued constraints and challenges that we face. Maintaining a high level of service with limited ability to maintain funding for them as our costs increased. Remaining in compliance with expenditure restraint and levy limit programs. We have an growing capital needs, which includes information as part of a recent facility study. There was $62 million in repairs and maintenance that need to be done with city of West Dallas facilities. Also finding a balance between pay and benefits to recruit and retain good employees while managing personnel costs and continuing to review our operations and implementing change. The budget includes 35.8 million dollars in salary and wages, 15.8 million dollars in benefits. So 82% of the budget is for salaries, wages, and benefits. Our OPEB liability is 146, almost 147 million dollars. The personnel that are allocated in the budget are 748 total positions. 170 of those are non-benefit positions. A lot of those include our election workers. We'll be hard at work tomorrow for the general governor's election. We do have 577 benefited positions. 523 of those are funded through the general fund and then about 54 of them are through other funding sources. Here's a breakdown of the personnel by their function. 51.5% are with public safety, engineering and public works is 27%. General government, 11.5. Health, culture, and recreation is 10%. Now, this one is really hard to read, so... But this has a listing of all of the expenditures by department. The most important number to point out on this is the bottom where it's total general fund expenditures. It's a limited increase of 1.22%. This is a fact sheet for our 2019 budget. This also has the 1.22% increase, but it also has the breakdown by the different categories that I mentioned previously. The total levy and total tax rate is a 1.2% increase. The employees are just going up by a .8 or a .1 percentage. And the fund balance that we have is 14.7% of our general fund expenditures.
So in addition to our general taxes, we also have utility budgets and those have user fees attached to them. This screen just shows some of the history of all of those utility rates, as well as what the current rates are. We're currently in the process of reviewing all of those funds to see what increases may be necessary for 2019.
An overall summary of the information, the non-tax levy increases for revenue is 1.2%. We're working to completely eliminate our reliance on the general fund reserves revenue budget. As I mentioned just a minute ago, the staffing levels just increased at a .8 full-time equivalency. The general net levy increase is at .85% or 704,000. The allowable increase under the expenditure restraint program is 1.6. The actual increase we have is 740,000. The assessed value and the tax rate are listed here at 300, let's see, 3 million? 3.7 billion. It would, it's a reduction of 41.4 million. And the estimated tax rate is 11.53. And that is it for our presentation. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the members of the common council?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, I would like to ask, I see it early in the beginning about the police department and fire department. There were some locations of budgetary additional, over 400,000, I think. For 40 for the fire department, just as well for the police department. Is that for, what reason is that? For, for the special programs that, or cost additional for overtime? I mean, what's the reason for?
So in the police department, there's a couple of reasons. One of them, probably the biggest reason, is just funding our overtime. In our budgets in the past, we haven't exactly funded what we're actually spending in overtime, so that's a large portion of it.
Okay.
There's also $100,000 being added for the crisis response team through, that we're working through Milwaukee County program on. There are also some other small increases throughout the budget. And then we're accounting differently, just a little bit in the general fund for our liaison officers through the schools. In the fire department, it's wages, wage increases per union contracts, and police is that as well. And a couple of small new programs and expansions.
Very good. Yeah, I have another question in reference of the state revenue. It seemed like they cut back in, in two areas, you know, like 200,000 in one area and 100, or 124,000 in some other area, right? Like for improvements, road improvements and... So there's two area where the state, they cut, actually the city, $324,000.
So the first one, that 200,000, that wasn't actually a reduction. That's just the level of funding that we get from municipal services. It is funded low, though, compared to all the buildings. It's done by an assessed value calculation of all the state-owned buildings in the city. The state is currently funding that at about 40%, but that is a flat number. The general transportation aids you mentioned at $124,000 reduction, that is true and that is based on a redistribution. In 2000, in the last budget cycle for the state, they allocated more funds for transportation aids. However, they separated them differently and now more are going to towns and villages than cities.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Are there any other questions or comments from the members of the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number four. And we will go to page two on our agendas. Item is citizen participation. This is the chance for residents to address the council on any matters of interest to them. We ask that you silence all your cell phones and keep your comments to approximately five minutes. We aim to keep this portion of our agenda to about 30 minutes. Does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. We will move to item F on our agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on page two of the agendas. Just pay special attention to the room numbers because there are some alterations this evening due to the election tomorrow and the equipment that is set up. Item G is the mayor's report. I just have two quick things. I want to thank the members of the West Dallas Youth Commission who took on their first project this year. And this weekend, on both Saturday and Sunday, they were out basically guerrilla gardening. They were planting tulips all over the city that they found on sale for the end of the season at Stein's. They were 30% off and they were out in the rain on Sunday. They went into some of our flower beds and planted around 150 tulips throughout the city, so we will see them in spring. I also want to mention that the 35th Annual Community Breakfast of Thanksgiving will be taking place once again on the Monday before Thanksgiving, November 19th. It is a community event that also raises money for all of our food pantries in our community. Tickets are $30 and we ask people to bring canned goods to donate to those food pantries as well. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. Are there any reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Oitnire.
Just want to take a moment here and our new neighborhood association, Fairview Park, will be hosting its first meeting on November 15th here at City Hall. 6:00 to 7:30. And I want to say thank you to Patty Conca, who is one of the leaders and organizers of the neighbor association for getting that together for us. And hope to see many people there. That's it.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council regular meeting of October 16th, 2018.
Second.
There's a motion with a quick second by alderperson Ranky. Is there any, are there any alterations to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item J, I will ask for a motion to send items six and seven to the city attorney.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Haas. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Standing committee reports. Alderman Chableski, License and Health?
Mayor Devine, I will read those out after the recess meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Weigle. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.